I'm streaming, do it, Dana.
All right, Chairman, we're ready to go.
All right, thank you. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this April 9th, 2020 meeting of the North Carolina State Board of Education. I'm Eric Davis, Chair of the Board, and I call this meeting to order. I now ask Dr. Townsend Smith to call the role to determine that we have a quorum of the Board participating, and I note to all listening that a quorum is seven members. Dr. Townsend Smith?
Yes, sir. Mr. Buckston?
Here.
Dr. Oxendine?
Here.
Ms. Camnetz?
Here.
Mr. Keenan? Ms- Mr. Hall?
Here.
Dr. Tipton Rogers?
Here.
Ms. White? Ms. White, oh, thank you. Yes, ma'am. Mr. Ford?
Here.
Treasurer, Lieutenant Governor?
Here.
Vice Chair Duncan?
Here.
Chair Davis?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. I note one change to our proposed agenda, which is to remove the closed session, Item D, as in Delta, which is no longer needed. I now ask for a motion to approve the April 9th, 2020 Agenda Less Item D. Is there a motion?
So moved.
And that was by?
Ms. Camnetz?
Motion by Ms. Camnetz. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hall. Dr. Townsend Smith?
Yes, sir. Mr. Buckston?
Yes.
Dr. Oxendine?
Yes.
Ms. Camnetz?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Here.
Dr. Tipton Rogers?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Lieutenant Governor?
Yes.
Vice Chair Duncan?
Yes.
Chair Davis?
Yes. The motion carries. We have an agenda. Board members are reminded that it's our duty to avoid conflicts of interest and the appearance of conflicts of interest as we handle the work of this Board. Does any member of the Board know of any conflict of interest or any appearance of conflict with respect to any matters coming before us at this meeting? If so, please state them for the record, and if during the course of the meeting you become aware of an actual or apparent conflict of interest, please bring the matter to the attention of the Chair, and it will then be your duty to abstain from participating in discussion on the matter and from voting on the matter. At our meeting last week, we extended well wishes.
Chair Davis? Chair Davis, you went out. Chair Davis?
There we go. Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
All right. So I noted at our last meeting, we extended well wishes to our own Treasurer Falwell as he started his recovery from COVID-19, and are pleased to report that he's making progress, and our hope is for your continued and quick recovery into good health. The COVID-19 pandemic continues to necessitate changes to Board policy and requests for legislative relief. As we work to act on needed changes, the Board extends our appreciation to the many partners in this work who have provided input, and to the DPI staff and working groups for their guidance and recommendations under the leadership of Doctors Emery and Stigall. We also extend our appreciation to the Department of Health and Human Services for their partnership during this crisis. The ultimate goal of this work is to create comprehensive guidance to the field to support our public schools and to develop joint legislative recommendations for submission to our partners in the General Assembly. Working together, we will achieve more to ensure the success for the nearly 1.6 million public school students we serve every day. I note for the record that the Board will take a roll call vote at the end of our meeting on all items requiring action on the agenda, and will now proceed directly to our committee meetings and begin with the Education, Innovation, and Charter Schools Committee. I call on Ms. White, Chair of that committee.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. I'm just checking to make sure that those, that you can hear me.
Yes, ma'am.
Wonderful. Good evening, or good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Amy White, Chair of the Education, Innovation, and Charter School Committee, sharing that responsibility with Jill Camnetz. We have two items before you today for action. If you will recall, at the last board meeting, I mentioned that we would be bringing these items to the Board's attention for action as a result of expedience we needed in order for a business transaction to occur from one entity to the other. So today, EICS I and EICS II are two items linked Commonwealth and Stewart Creek High School, and EICS I are requesting to change its EMO. Central Wake High School is also requesting to change its EMO. Both of these entities are alternative status dropout prevention. They share the same board, and they also share the management company, which was previously Alternative Learning Solutions, Inc. The current management of, the management company is going to remain the same, as is the president, who will become the CEO. ALS, Inc. is going to become Alternative Learning Solutions, LLC. This is a material change in their charter and Board members. I request approval on both of these entities today. Are there any questions?
No questions, Ms. White.
Thank you, Dr. Townsend Smith. Mr. Chair, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. White. Before we move to the Student Learning and Achievement Committee, I'd like to be clear that the waiver request we're about to discuss do not reflect any change in the Board's support of high academic standards, effective assessments to inform instruction, or an accountability system that continuously drives improved academic achievement for our students. Consideration of these requests are necessitated by the unique events of COVID-19. I'll now recognize Mr. Buckston, Chair of the Student Learning and Achievement Committee. Mr. Buckston?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I'm joined on the Student Learning and Achievement Committee by our Vice Chair, Dr. Olivia Oxendine. Board members, we have two items today, SLA I, which will be our COVID-19 Accountability Recommended Policy and Legislative Changes, and then a related SLA II on CPR waiver for graduation. If you haven't already brought it up, I would recommend bringing up the SBE NCDPI Legislative Waiver Requests and Board Policy Waivers document, and I'm going to make a few comments about that list. Here it goes. It's in front of us now. You've seen this list in some different in some different forms in previous weeks. We had an Accountability Working Group Report for discussion at our last meeting, and I just want to make a few comments about what is on this list. I want to entertain some questions from Board members, and then if there are any requests for changes, we'll then take those up finally. If you look at the first two, one and two, these relate to our, we've taken action on the first one with our federal waiver, which may in fact satisfy our legislative waiver, but we are making clear that any state-related results, our request to waive end-of-grade exams and in the course exams, also our end-of-year K3 reading diagnostic assessments. You see in the Accountability Working Group Report some conversation about CTE and work keys, and while we realize there's been some disruption there, most of our students, literally almost all of them, took the CTE exam, and the Department is working through ways to make sure everyone else has a chance, excuse me, ACT exam. I'm going to get to CTE in a second, or ACT exam. And the Department is also working to make sure students are going to have access to take work keys. So those are not on here for waiver at this time, and we don't expect them to be. Items three through 10 are assessment-related items where identification and other decisions are made on the basis of our summative assessments, and you can see the list of things we will, we are requesting waiver for there. Items 11 and 12, our school report card and school performance grades and alternative accountability model items, again, that we'll request waiver on, and items 13 through 17, which are bonus-related items. Two comments here. You do not see an item related to AP, IB, and the Cambridge exams, which do appear in the Working Group Report as a discussion item. We're going to, we're gathering more information on those exams, which the state, as you know, doesn't give, and we'll be coming back to the Board with further information and potential recommendation by the Department for action. Also, as many of you know, there's a principal recruitment bonus available, and we intend not so much to waive that, but rather to work with our partners in the General Assembly on looking at prior year data, 2018, 19 data, to trigger eligibility for bonuses going into the 2020, 2021 school year. Those are the 17 items that the SLA Committee is recommending for approval. We also have two State Board of Education Assessment Policy Waivers, numbers 18 and 19, that relate to our English language learners. There is documentation on both of these on E-Board. I commend to you the EL Waivers Executive Summary for a look at that. It is not so much about not assessing students, but it's the 30-day window, which we're looking to waive here, given the unique circumstances, circumstances with COVID-19. Let me see if there are any questions from Board members about any of the items 1 through 19 on this list.
Mr. Buckston, this is Olivia.
Dr. Oxendine.
Thank you so much. I had to remember to unmute myself. Talk to me just momentarily about where progress, I guess, progress monitoring, that's the data generally, that's generated from iStation, would be one of the di, is that in the upper part of the, top part of the list? I don't see it now. Under diagnostic, is that correct?
That's right. So the legislative requirement to assess our K3 students with valid, reliable formative and diagnostic reading assessments, we have, as you know, beginning of year and middle of year data, we have some progress monitoring data up until March 13th. This waiver would be about any remaining assessment, then waiving the requirement to do any remaining assessment, given the character of the year.
Would the data collect, would we have, or do, this would be pure speculation, do you think the, would this waiver cover any of the data collected prior to the 13th? And would the General Assembly, can we rest assured that the General Assembly will not need data prior to the 3/13?
I, I believe-
Of course, we could probably access that.
Right. We can access that data, and certainly that would be available to them, and also would be available for notification of parents and families and guardians of that data. This is, this is really about data not yet collected in this school year.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions from Board members on 1 through 19 on this list? Seeing none, or hearing none, I'll move to SLA II, which is the COVID-19 EPR Legislative Waiver. Obviously, we're in similar situation about the ability to provide for some of our students to meet this as a graduation requirement, so we are also requesting a waiver. Any questions on this item? Would be happy to have staff answer this one. Okay. Seeing none, those are our two items. I would, just once again, before we close this off, ask for any other questions. These two items are the committee's recommendation for approval to go to the General Assembly. Mr. Chairman, that concludes our report.
Thank you, Mr. Buckston. I now recognize Dr. Oxendine, Chair of the Educator Standards and Practice Committee. Dr. Oxendine?
Thank you, Chair Davis. This is Olivia Oxendine, and I do chair the Educator Standards and Practice Committee, and sharing that responsibility with me is Ms. Amy White. This item that is coming before us today for action, action, are items that are very, very pertinent to our EPPs across North Carolina as we conduct our business right now. They pertain to, as you can follow along in your material, the areas come under licensure, under educator preparation, and on over to the second page of your material, under educator preparation, we have student teaching, and then the Praxis Core. We know the Praxis Core is that particular test that is given to students prior to their admission to teacher education. The items that you see highlighted in yellow are the items, particular items, and the recommendation that we will be voting on later in this meeting. I would like for Dr. Tomberlin, if he is on the call, to come forward and briefly discuss some of the details around these items that we're considering.
Yes, ma'am, I'm here. So these, as Dr. Oxendine indicated, there are two items that the Board would be voting for, voting on, and that is to recommend a legislative action. The others are just to make you aware that these, these are concerns in the field, and our assumptions about how we would approach those. In all cases, except for under, under ed prep, 2B is the preferred action, as it's highlighted there, but in all other cases, our preferred action is the A option under those outlines. So just really briefly with the, with the converting to a CPL, our request is that we extend all licenses with a June 30th, 2020 expiration date to June 30th, 2021, until they can pass the test. This, this really wouldn't affect residency license, because all residency license holders are in, only in their second year. This is their second year, and they still have a third year to renew that license. But there are some issues with residency licenses that we'll come back to at a later time. EPP completers, we want to, we're just going to follow the current Board policy of direct licensure, where, where teachers are not able to get a recommendation from their EPP as a result of the test, and we would look to legislative actions surrounding the student teaching component to guide any further actions the Board might need to address the student teaching issue. And then the Praxis Core is, the recommendation is to waive, and that's consistent with what others have recommended to the General Assembly. My understanding is that you received a, some documents that outline some of the issues related to licensure and ed prep that are coming before, that have been raised by the General Assembly, and you should make sure you look those over to, to understand what the, what actions that are being contemplated in the General Assembly. And I'm happy to take any questions.
Any questions from my colleagues? Any comments? So we will be voting on this shortly, Chair Davis. Thank you, Dr. Tomberlin.
Yes, ma'am.
Dr. Oxendine, could you clarify for Board members in this document which items are recommended for approval and will be approved by a yes vote?
Yes, that, if you will look under the first, under licensure, the first item, licensee, converting to the CPL, and then you see the highlighted area. So it says extend all licenses with the June 30, 2020 expiration to June 30, 21. Would not convert to the CPL, but maintain initial the IPL until they, the candidate passes the test, and that, the extension would be through June 30, 2021. So we will be acting on that. And then if you move further into the document, on the second page, under Praxis Core, to A, the requirement to pass the Praxis Core, which is the exam that candidates or potential candidates into a teacher ed program would be required to take that particular test. So what, what is coming before the Board for, for action is to A, I mean, sorry, 2B, the requirement to pass the Praxis Core is waived for admission to an EPP for the 2021 academic year. It says this option would require legislative act, action. So those are the two components of the, of that particular item. Chair Davis?
Thank you for the clarification.
Any other questions? If not, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Oxendine. We'll now proceed to the last committee of the day, Business Operations, led by Vice Chair Duncan. Mr. Duncan?
Okay, I think I just got unmuted. Can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
Very good. We have several items, four action items, on first reading for BizOP Committee. On behalf of Todd Chastain, we represent and lead the BizOP Committee. Our first item is the approval of contracts over $500,000, and the contract approval here is a contract with iStation. It is cumulatively would be over $1 million for the year, which is why we have it for approval. The proposed agreement contemplates a pause while the state continues to address emergent circumstances. Some of the key points and highlights are the data will be preserved and maintained under this three-month agreement, which will extend through June 30th, 2020, and the districts will not need to re-roster students, which you all may recall was a concern. Teachers will continue to be able to view student data from the assessment before the contract expires, and for those districts who are otherwise utilizing this tool, they will still have access to the features of the iStation tool throughout the timeframe. One last aspect of it is the, there's a proposed release that the State Board of Education will put out, which was requested by iStation. It outlines the contours of the agreement, and it provides additional context regarding the reason for the arrangement. That has been posted on E-Board, so hopefully you've had a chance to look at it. And so that's to make clear that the change in the agreement is brought about by the circumstances of what we're all dealing with, and that's an important clarification, I think, for everyone. Eric Snyder has been extraordinarily helpful to us, as has, has, has others. And now Eric, I don't know if you want to add to this at this point or not, if you're on the line.
I think I've just got unmuted. Just a, a brief addition, Mr. Duncan.
Please.
With, with respect to this proposal, it still needs to move through our regular procurement channels and the Department of Information Technology. So as the Board considers the proposal today, it would be subject to, subject to that additional important step.
Thank you. That's a good clarification. Thank you for making that clear. Any questions or comments on that item?
Yes, Mr. Duncan, this is Olivia. If I might add, just ask a brief question?
Certainly.
I, help me understand how this amended contract changes the role of the Department with respect to iStation. Will the, will the responsibility, the oversight, the, the, I suppose, the prior, prior to COVID-19, will, will that specific role of the Department change substantially in this revised contract?
Let me ask Mr. Snyder to directly address that. Dr. Oxendine?
Thank you.
Sure. It's a great, it's a great question, Dr. Oxendine. It's important to note that one of the concerns on the expiration of the contract was, was steps that might need to be taken to, I'm going to say uninstall the, the program from use here in the state. This prevents the Department, this proposal would stop those, any sort of efforts to, you know, uninstall the product. The proposed offer makes clear that the Department will continue to engage in necessary and reasonable efforts to help facilitate preservation of data and systems that would support North Carolina, and otherwise continue efforts within the regular course of business that enable iStation to fulfill. Those separate agreements that it's entered into with school districts and charter schools, to the extent those partners out in the field have elected to purchase independently other elements that are in istation's portfolio of offerings. With respect to the Department's role, the existing data is essentially frozen in time, and I think the proposal outlines some concerns that Board members have previously articulated about uncertainties here during these emergent, during these emergency times. In the event there are students come back to school and there was a requirement for end-of-year testing or other formative assessments, we could again amend with iStation to provide for those particular services, and this proposal would essentially mitigate, mitigate a change in the status quo for, for, for districts with respect to rostering their students. So the Department will continue to have access to, to data, though, to be clear, the formative assessment and progress monitoring and subscription service is not included in, in this particular proposal, which is reflected in the, in the price that's before you today. Does that, does that answer your question, Dr. Oxendine?
Thank you so much for taking the time to respond to the question. If I, please indulge me, Mr. Duncan, and I promise not to be exhaustive with my, my next question. You've been, you've been extraordinarily, to my colleagues, you've been extraordinarily patient. I suppose here, here's my question. Let me give you a hypothetical. Let's suppose next month that the State Board of Education, namely Olivia Oxendine, or it could be some other interested Board member, would want to have some data gathered about frequency of use among families in North Carolina, using, signing on iStation, using the materials that are part of the subscription paid for in the two, I think it's 250, something like that. How- How, could that information be easily accessed and, and brought to, to the State Board? I mean, how would we gather that information? Would we need to go out to the individual systems to, to know that?
Again, under the terms of the contract, let me ask Mr. Snyder to respond initially.
Sure, it's, it's a good, another good question, Dr. Oxendine. With respect to state-level administration, this, this agreement contemplates those efforts being stopped at a state level. So iStation has a variety of customers, so to speak, across the state, some school districts and, and charters, who will use different elements of istation's portfolio as part of their, as part of their strategy. With respect to the level of usage across districts that have elected for those, elected to purchase those other components of their program, I couldn't tell you sitting here today what sort of visibility we have as a department into those additional uses outside of the formative assessments, which are subject to this uncertainty right now. However, I'll just indicate that throughout these recent discussions, istation has been very responsive to questions. And I think through reaching out to istation, we could probably get a hold of some of that information, either via the department or with a request from the board. I'll just note that another piece that's identified that's separate of this contract proposal is that some that may have seen that istation offered to provide some of its reading math and Spanish curriculum resources for free here in North Carolina. And to the extent, which of course is separate from, from this proposal concerning assessment, I'm, I'm certain that folks at istation would, you know, welcome those kinds of inquiries from the board to talk about the ways that other districts are, the ways certain districts are using their products outside of their subscription service.
Thank you very much. I'm still, I am still having difficulty with this issue, and, and it comes down to the importance of data in the area of early literacy, reading and, reading and early literacy. It almost puts us, data, information, it absolutely does, it puts information that would be so valuable to us from 13, 313 on forward, in a black box. We would, as a State Board policymakers, we would just be without any information. Of course, we could, someone from the department can pick up the phone and, and request some data from our LEAs, but it still puts us in such an inconvenient spot in terms of knowing about the skill development and the ongoing achievement of our youngest students in the area of reading. I, I just, I don't know of another issue that has, you know, stayed on my mind like this one.
Thank you for those observations, and I know they're heartfelt, Dr. Oxendine. I haven't had several conversations with you about this. And so the, just to not in any way reduce from those concerns because they are significant and shared by all. And some groups that have been gathered, and I know you're well aware of this, and were involved in some of this process, and gathering groups from our, some of our most experienced educators and superintendents, the focus that because of the great disruption that's occurring, because of the fact that we, as many students as we are able to cover and provide services to, there are limitations with the distance learning approach. And because of that, the, the primary focus is going to be necessarily will be a gear up to being able to assess when we get our students back for the next school year, whenever that works out, however, whatever details are worked through in order to get to that place, that, there's going to be an emphasis on extensive evaluation in terms of exactly where, or assessment, I think is the proper word I should be using, rather, extensive assessment efforts to make sure, know where the students are as of that time after the disruption and what their needs are, and what the focus on resolving those needs will be. And that has been some of the recommendations we've received, as you know. But the points you make are still very important points to consider, and this is not an easy, an easy situation. So thank you for lifting up these points. It, it makes for a much better discussion. We're grateful for it. Are there other questions and comments? All right, one last thing, and I'd like to say the contract on this is for $243,000, and I did neglect to say that when I first went through, and I apologize for that. Our next item, BizOP 2, is transportation hold harmless on energy efficiency ratings. You recall, we dealt with this issue recently because of the disruptions that happened for many of our school systems due to the hurricane stoppage of school for considerable periods of time last year, and, and the rerouting that then became involved in order to serve all our students. Well, we're having obviously similar issues in terms of being able to use the formula that's typically relied upon for proper allocation of the resources for transportation services. Recommendations come forward that a funding formula be developed and implemented so that at a minimum, school districts will not face any reduction in their funding formula, transportation allotment compared to the 2019, 2020 levels. That process of determining the funding formula allotments is going on now for the next school year, and it's important that we provide guidance on that. I believe Kevin Harrison is here to speak on this, if there are any questions about it. Kevin, do you want to make a comment? Are there any questions or comments from, from board members?
So I think you covered it really well. The objective here is to make sure that school districts are making decisions about what to do with any remaining funding they have in transportation this year that are in the best interest of their students, whatever that is in their local area, and to not attempt to make decisions based on a formula of what they might end up with next year because of the decisions they made this year. And so I think it's very important that, that this direction be given so that they are free to make the decisions that are, that they believe are in the best interests of their districts.
Thank you for that, and thank you for the hard work that you are doing in leading the transportation efforts, which are still ongoing in their own way through this closure period, so we appreciate your work on that. Any other questions or comments on this item? I'll go on to BizOP 3 then, which again is COVID-19 related. It's a class-sized legislative waiver. Many may remember that at this point in time, the General Assembly generally has required in, in recent times, the K3 class-sized report and affidavit from superintendents around the state. And the request here is, the recommendation here is that the board approve a waiver for submission to the General Assembly, these required class-sized affidavits at this point, at this time, given the disruption and given the difficulty it would be for the superintendents to be able to fully assess those issues in light of the circumstances we find ourselves in. Are there questions or comments on this particular waiver item? And again, this would be a request for approval of that waiver. All right, not hearing any. Let me go on then to BizOP number four, which would be our last of our action items, which is the federal programs monitoring and support waiver. As you will all recall, we received word of federal waivers of some federal program requirements and reporting obligations. And in your materials, you saw, you will see there are a number of waiver options. And the, the first one has to do with a carryover limitation, which is being waived. We're, we're not requesting that one because we already have a carryover waiver in place. But the other requested options have to do with various funds for programs in which the state agency participates under the ESCE plans and programs. We are requesting waivers. It's already been indicated by Department of Education guidance that these waivers will be granted if requested. Certain assurances need to be given, and you'll also see those listed in your materials, that the state will comply with the appropriate guidelines in seeking these waivers. And so those assurances are also being given as part of this waiver request, but this is consistent with Department, US Department of Education guidance, and it's something that our staff is recommending to us. Are there, and Dr. Townsend, I believe, is available to comment on this if there's a need or if there are any questions or comments. So let me open the floor to board members for any questions or comments that you might All right, not hearing any. Let me go on then to our last item, which is a discussion item, and it's actually, it's only intended to be a pretty brief report at this point, which is on, actually will be on two items. The first is, is on child nutrition. As you know, a great deal of effort has gone into maintaining the provision of meals to our most, to our children who are most in need of keeping regular nutrition in place despite the closure of the schools. There's been a great deal of activity undertaken by our school nutrition workers, and in many instances also by our bus drivers, to make sure that our children are receiving the type of support that they need and deserve. We've all read, I think, of some of the stories of the heroic efforts of people in child nutrition departments around the state, and also some people in the private sector who've also been making heroic efforts to make sure that our children remain in a good place from a nutrition standpoint. We continue to support that effort. It's under some stress. At one point, for example, last week, Duplin County was in a position where they were indicating they may not go forward. Our, our board member, Reggie Keenan, was able to work very hard with his fellow school board members and with a local organization to put in place an ongoing system in Duplin County. And so we're very grateful that Duplin County worked so hard to, to find the resources to make it work, and thank our fellow board member Reggie Keenan for his leadership in that regard. Others have been similarly stressed. To, to give a, a little bit more detailed report about, I don't count the exact percentage, but somewhere around 25 to 30% of our districts are offering some additional compensation, primarily out of local funds. The allocation of the $50 million that Governor Cooper made available to the school districts allows for the use of some of those funds for appropriate compensation, as deemed in a local, in local situations for use in continuing this mission of assuring a nutritional pipeline to our students. But there are, there are stresses on the system, and so I, we don't have any immediate resolutions at this moment, but we are working on continuing to work with finding ways to support the, our employees who are around the state who are doing a job to be lauded and to whom we give tremendous thanks to, to support these children. But we need to recognize the stress that they're under, and we also need to try to do what we can to find appropriate compensation on an ongoing basis for the work that they're doing. And that, that effort is continuing. We're partnering with DHAHS in efforts to explore the best methods and others. We're also trying to get a handle on exactly what the, you know, the cost of this will be so that that helps us. We're also partnering with the private sector whenever we can and when appropriate in, in the local districts. And so the local districts are really doing a, a lot of work on this, and we should all be grateful for the work that's going on. The last discussion point is, and I'll just go ahead and say it, and then if there's any comments, certainly we'll open the floor to that. Or in this case, open the cyber lines to it. Federal, federal grant situation, I know we've all read about it. It's not, it, it's without the kind of details we need to have any kind of intelligent discussion about it at this point, or any deep discussion about it. It's, it's going to be somewhere in the neighborhood of $390 million to North Carolina. At least 90% of it must be distributed to the LEAs. That will obviously be welcome and very needed relief in the LEAs, and perhaps can help in a number of situations. It's, it's, it's got some guidelines on how it's to be used. It may be able to help the districts in several different areas, including perhaps, in some part anyway, the, one of the areas we were just speaking about. But there, there are going to be guidelines set. They're not yet fully clear, although there are some guidelines that we've already started taking a look at, some preliminary guidelines. There will be more to follow on this, and the board will need to be involved in further action in terms of appropriate distribution of these funds, and obviously assuring that the guidelines that go out to the LEAs are consistent with the guidelines that are set by the federal government, so that we in all respects are able to use the funds in a very beneficial way for the districts in a way in full compliance with the federal granting authorities. So with those two quick discussion point updates, any other comments, certainly open the floor for those, and, and then otherwise, we'll be finished, completed with our report from the BizOP Committee.
Mr. Duncan, Matt Smith here.
Yes, Matt.
So as you touched on that final item with regards to federal funding coming to the states that will be pushed out to the LEAs, one general question I wanted to ask was if there's going to be, or if you anticipate and foresee as part of that process, districts being able to do a needs assessment of ways in which they may be able to capitalize upon some of that federal funding that's going to be pushed out to them, for, for the purposes not just of remediation, but also of innovation. It seems that we have found ourselves, as a result of COVID-19, at a moment in sort of the, the educational progress of our state, which many districts are looking at their operations, at, you know, the status quo, and, and thinking, how might we not just fill the inequities that are becoming really apparent through COVID-19, through broadband and other items, but how also might we innovate and do school differently? And so thinking about how North Carolina has structured our innovation and progress grants, I think we've had a couple around of those this year. You'll have to correct me if, if I'm not quite right on that. But there, there have been sometimes proposals coming up from the LEAs in which we've been able to, to hear about innovative ways of using state funds to, to transform education. And then there also have been times, like the $50 million that we discussed a couple weeks ago, in which funding formulas have pushed funds out to LEAs and allowed them to use those funds as they see fit. Can you talk a little bit about the possibility that we might be able to use some of those federal funds for maybe innovative restructuring of, of the way schools work? Or do you anticipate it just being filling in funding gaps that have resulted as a result of COVID-19?
Well, thank you for, as always, insightful thoughts, Dr. Christa Smith. The, two or three facets of that. The first one, obviously, is whatever's done has to follow one of the guidelines that are received, number one. And number two, the local, different, local agencies are going to take a different look at what their needs are in different ways, and assess those, and that will be a very important process around the state. But interestingly, you used the word, can we use it for innovation rather than remediation? And I think if you take a step back, if you consider our present circumstances, is there really a difference between remediation versus innovation here? I'm not sure that there is in terms of the issues that need to be addressed. Yes, we know that our students will, will have greater needs, but yes, we also know we're going to have to be very innovative in terms of meeting those needs. We're needing to do that right now to be very innovative, to meet the needs, and we'll have to continue to expand upon that innovation to meet the needs. And when we get our students back in order to properly remediate in ways that we've never dealt with before, we will need to be able to look at being innovative and how to do it. So I think it's, again, the guidelines for the, how the federal money to be used will be paramount, but I believe it's quite likely that as part of working so hard to remediate our students, that part of that necessarily will involve some innovative and creative thinking, so long as it's evidence-based. So that's, that's, that would be a preliminary answer. Again, we need more guidance to give firm answers on that, but I think your thought process is... process is always is, is a good idea in terms of thinking, how can we best help kids with these resources? So, thank you for those thoughts.
Thank you, Mr. Duncan.
Any other questions or comments? All right, well, thank y'all very much. That concludes the BizOp Committee Report.
Thank you, Vice Chair Duncan. That concludes our committee reports for the day. Board members will now vote on any item requiring action from your committee reports. A thorough discussion and report was provided on each item. I've received a request to vote separately on BizOp 1. Are there any other requests to pull any items from our action or action on first reading agendas? Hearing none, I ask for a motion to approve the following. EICS 1 and 2, SLA 1 and 2, ES and P 1, which contains two items as presented, and BizOp 2 through 4. Is there a motion to approve those items?
Still moved.
Jay Biggs.
There's a motion by Mr. Buxton. Is there a second?
Olivia, seconds.
Second by Dr. Oxendine. Any discussion on this motion? Hearing none, Dr. Townsend Smith, will you call the roll to capture the vote?
Yes, sir. Mr. Buxton?
Yes.
Dr. Oxendine?
Yes.
Ms. Camnitz?
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Hall? Mr. Hall? Dr. Tipton Rogers?
Yes.
Ms. White? Ms. White, thank you. Thank you. Mr. Ford?
Thank you. Lieutenant Governor?
Yes.
Chair Davis?
Yes.
Yes, unanimous.
Thank you. Next, I'll ask for a motion to approve BizOp 1. There a motion to approve BizOp 1?
Still moved. Ms. Camnitz.
Motion by Ms. Camnitz. Is there a second? Second. Second by Mr. Duncan. Any questions on this motion? Dr. Townsend Smith?
Yes, sir. Mr. Buxton?
Yes.
Dr. Oxendine?
No.
Ms. Camnitz?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Dr. Tipton Rogers?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Lieutenant Governor?
Vice Chair Duncan?
Yes.
Chair Davis?
Yes.
You have a majority.
Motion carries. Thank you, board members, advisors, and staff for your attention and participation today. Seeing no additional business for the board at this time, I hope that each of you will take a much-needed and well-deserved break and enjoy a long weekend with your family and friends. Please make sure that you continue to follow the stay-at-home mandate per the governor's executive order, and should you go out, please stay safe by practicing social distancing guidelines. I now ask for a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn, Mrs. White.
Motion by Ms. White, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Ford.
Second, Mr. Ford. Dr. Townsend Smith?
Yes, sir. Mr. Buxton?
Yes.
Dr. Oxendine?
Yes.
Ms. Camnitz?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Hall? Dr. Tipton Rogers?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Vice Chair Duncan?
Yes.
Chair Davis?
Yes.
Yes, unanimous.
Motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Townsend Smith. We stand adjourned. Have a good day.
Thank you.
Thank you, you too.